This time we'll call the Tuesday, October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two meeting of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors to order. There in McDevitt, Max Steinis and myself, Jack Willie are your kind supervisors and Lisa Smith and Bjorn Beck from the Auditor's Office. And Mokie Art Administrative Assistant. And first item on our agenda this morning is Todd Kenny, our Jackson County engineer. Morning, Todd.
Well, the first item would have been a driveway for Tom Fetterspiel. He is asking for that to be removed. That's, I guess, the there was gonna be a plane of sale or whatever, evidently that didn't go through, so the driveway or driveway is not needed anymore. So that's no action of that.
So they haven't put it in?
Huh?
It never got put in?
Well, this is a permit to put it in, so no.
Okay.
Um, and then the next two items are utility permits. One is for basically a farmer to put in a water line across the road that's gonna be bored under S K Road. Nothing special about that, so. I think for these two, we waived the permit fee, so.
I've made a motion to approve it. A minute.
Second, motion and second. To approve the permit for land and roar. All those in favor?
I, I.
Next one's for Macoca Valley Electric. Basically to make two different boring crossings. Under D sixty one, nothing, I mean, nothing special about this.
Motion to approve.
I would say.
Motion and second to approve the Macoca Valley Electric. Utility permit, all those in favor?
I.
So project updates. Is that chance for the South Main Bridge is now open?
Yeah.
One thing that still remains, there's a joint that has to be sealed between the the barrier rail and the trail, the straight will have to come back and put some sealant in there. That's what I understand is only remaining item. So that other trail work you see farther to the north, that's not part of the job. It's not done yet. That's has to do, I think that's part of a trails job that the city has, so. Uh, let's see here, the patching work, they actually started that Thursday of last week. They got the little section of west of Andrew, they're now working east of Andrew, Andrew to Spring Brook. They're saying another probably twelve days to finish that, and that'll be all the P C C patching that was supposed to be done as part of that contract. We still have a contract to, uh, Klesner to do hot mix asphalt patching where they mill and fill. Uh, there's six different locations, different places in the county, but that hasn't started yet, it's supposed to be yet done this fall. The four hundred and seventy fifth Street Bridge, the trainers do is a contract labor bridge. Uh, all the concrete is poured, uh, S two is supposed to be moving in to do the dirt work, and I would estimate that that would be open probably hopefully by sometime next week, so. The Farmers Creek Bridge, they started, uh, I think I was on a hundred and seventy fifth street. They have two of the pile driven in the west abutment, uh, they'll be driving the rest of those pile today, and then they dig down and set their back wall plank when they get all the plank, then they'll move to the other side, to the other side, so. For them to do three more after this, they need to be doing these things in about three weeks. I'm gonna guess, um, if they do finish all this fall, they'll be pouring concrete into December and probably have to put like it's up and provide heat, I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess, so. Did, you know, it's hard to determine what the weather's gonna be like in December, but, um, if they're gonna try and get it done in December, they're gonna have, probably have to do some cold weather concrete, um, mitigation, so. Oh, let's see, last week we had our, uh, safety meeting. And I also, I met with more greater operators afterwards and Roger, we talked about the, uh, so Jackson County blading policy, so I had, uh, Roger and I went through this, uh, to basically make this specific to Jackson County. It lays out, gives some basic information about blading, how to take care of different things, give this to the blade operators. Um, and then it sets expectations for Crown, basically the cross slope of the road and the frequency of blade, so those two things. You know, the bottom line is a lot, there's a lot of different environmental factors that that affect the condition of the driving surface, obviously weather's a big one. But the main thing is if we can get the water off the road into the ditch, that's the main thing. If you can do that as a greater operator, you, you're, you're gonna be fairly long along the path of providing a decent driving surface. So, and then the other thing, and I thought I brought one in. Just when you think you got everything, you don't. Well, there's a typical cross section that we have, and I can show you that too, but typical cross section just lays out what the minimum width of the travel lane should be, so the gravel surface, what we have are grass shoulders, what the slopes of the shoulder should be. Uh, so that to the policy in the cross section do two things, one, it gives the operators direction, so they know what they need to do, what they're gonna be held accountable to. The second thing is if we get complaints or whatever, if they're performing maintenance in, in compliance with the policy in the section, then they're meeting what the standard we're trying to, trying to make the public aware of. So like, I think I mentioned this before, if you drive around different parts of the county, uh, you should generally see a, a, a typical section and how it gets played, and obviously if you're you know, into the bluffs and certain parts of the county, the road width is gonna vary because you just don't have the right way, um, to work with, but it gets sets a standard for the guys so they know what, what we want or what we expect as, as the main management, so.
So do our graders have, but?
So, yes, okay, I asked that, so yeah, they should have a system like a bowl level, basically. Uh, it's got a big, most of them are like that. You can get digital ones, but I'm assuming these are, these are more just the slope level ones, so. Um, so we've met about that, talked about that. And what was the other thing? Oh, uh, Randy's coming in today, um, the sign guy at Bamber. Uh, we're gonna, uh, I'm gonna talk to him about going out and measuring gravel road thicknesses. I have ten spots identified in the county throughout the county. And I just wanna make sure we pick up other points of interest, like if we got big grain bin sites or hog five bit sites where we have specific heavy ag traffic, I kinda wanna pick those, a few of those spots up too. But we're gonna start setting a baseline for what we have for average gravel road thickness. It's, you know, we have all these design standards that we have for paved roads and gravel roads typically get neglected because we don't have those. Most, I've been doing this in Clay County for over ten years and be surprised how little thickness we have on the gravel road. I would say most farmers probably have more rock thickness in their yards at their, you know, their green bed site, so they're wherever they have their shops than we have on the road, so.
Is that done by boring or samples or something?
Yeah, so he's got the according machine on his side truck, so he's gonna, so what I'll do is each lane, the middle of each travel lane, take a measurement and each one, the average of, that's the thickness at that spot, so.
Nice to know.
So we'll start setting a baseline and then, you know, hopefully we can kinda track if we're gaining or losing, right? So if we're losing, we need to budget more for rock. And it's not the money we budget for rocks, it's the tons we need to budget because rock prices go up, so if you keep adding a little bit of money budget to rock, but your price of rock is overtaking the, the money you add, you're actually losing, so we need to budget tons of that money, so. That's it.
Is the patching affected by the weather that we, that they're not here and do you know if they're coming?
The concrete patching or the asphalt?
Asphalt.
I'm assuming it's just affected by the project work, so, uh, they can put asphalt down, I think it's up to forty degrees, surface temp. So they got a, a bit of a window yet, it's just milling fill, so it's just spots, it's not like they gotta be six miles a painting, so. I, I'm still hold on, hope you'll be done yet this year, so.
Okay. There's no contract for that for a deadline either, then I take it.
Uh, it's just the price that helped you, so, you know, they, if they spend, finish in the spring, they're gonna have to.
Honor that price. And that policy that you talked about, is that something that's available to read so I can better understand what we're, what you started with, and if you're changing, what you're changing, or is that not my business?
No, it's, it's, uh,
I mean, it sounds interesting.
I'll email the board, the policy and the typical section, so you'll have it too.
I agree. So. That way, yeah, but if somebody's got questions, I sound like I know what a problem.
My son. And then the brush you talked about last week, I talked to Roger. He's gonna, we're gonna go out mow as far as we can reach from the edge of the road with a boom mower in the trees and brush, and then Roger said the erosion part that he's talking about, he meant that's outside of the right away, but we'll mow it down and see, cause it's hard to even kinda see what you're looking at till we get it mowed. We'll mow it down, but it looks like what the erosion, like what this person was talking about is outside the right away, so it's gonna, I mean, if he wants to mitigate that, I'll have to do it, so. So, anyway, there'll be outmowing that, and then, um, we could take another look at it after we get it cleaned up, but Roger said when he went out and pulled the tape, it would be under thirty-three feet, so.
And with, is there a buildup in the ditch that pushed it that way, or?
Well, it just looks like to me so that this creek, so it comes, comes from the north and it follows this, well, you can see it right here. It comes down like this, and then it runs due east in the ditch and then down. So I'm gonna guess it used to cross, cross the field and then put it next to the road.
Is this on Saturday, what we're talking about, the one we talked about?
Thirty-third Street, southeast of Monmouth, not Monmouth, was that a little town?
Nashville.
Nashville.
Oh, okay.
That's all I have.
Okay.
He asked me at a garage sale. At a garage sale. Washing into my fence and field, and I'm like, okay.
Uh, and then we have a, we set up interviews for next week for the great. That's the other thing. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Do you wanna give me the contracts this time?
Yeah. All right, I usually come back in later after. I see him on my desk, I'm like, oh.
Thank you, sir. Do you have any visitors or citizens doesn't look like it, so Matt, you wanna come up, Matt Spett from E C I A? Discuss possible action on Brownfield grant application and letter of support.
Good morning, good morning.
So it's grant writing time again at E C I A for the EPA Brownfield Grant. Um, we rewarded one in sixteen and the twenty-one is, or the two thousand and twenty grand is just wrapping up, we have all those funds committed. So the funding round is open again, um, and we're looking to apply for a million dollars this time. Um, again, we're asking Jackson County to join as a non-lead member for this grant, I think you were in the past grants too, so. Again, there's no local match. There's really no staff time involved in it, we do all of that, so. Um, you guys signing on again, we would, we would work it just like the last time, um, we did send out kind of a program update of the projects we have worked on. And then the last one here was Jackson Hospital, where we've done, we did an assessment and planning stuff on, but um, we're always looking for more, more, uh, sites too, so if you know with any within the county, we would be sure willing to go take a look at it, talk to community to, uh, to see what we can help them with, like I said, we can go and do an assessment on the property, see what sort of contaminants are in it, and then also, um, public planning stuff, you know, so what this might turn into, what it might be reused for, so. Things are good program, I think, like I said, we've done a lot of sites throughout Macopa, um, probably be nice to branch out more into Jackson County, so.
You know, that's interesting, you know, you, you think about that, I just, maybe we'll have to drive around, look for some sites, but I'm sure they're out there, you know, that's just.
Well, I know they've been working with us on historical society, putting agents, that's.
Yeah, I knew there would be a nightmare.
You know, my, my, some of my property here in town is on in that brown field, like where you have railroad tracks.
What I mean is, a lot of it, it doesn't have to be like an old gas station or. But I mean, just an older building that, yeah, that they can't underutilize, so.
Did supply you with that resolution as my hand?
Yes. I mean, I'm perfectly fine, I am too supporting your efforts area.
I would make a motion to.
So there's resolution.
The grant application and the letter of support.
Okay, resolution nine twenty-five, ten twenty-five, twenty-two.
I would second.
A motion and a second to approve resolution, resolution supporting the Brownfield, um, application, all those in favor?
I.
I, motion carried.
Thank you.
You also need, um, a letter of support for the eligibility information and non-lead coalition member commitment.
Yep.
So moved.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
I.
I, motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, sorry. And my last name has two L's in it.
What did I do?
He always puts one.
Okay, okay.
Is Bruce coming?
No.
Well, why don't we have you come up then? Cause Jeanie's not here yet and Beth is. So we have a few minutes.
I won't take very much time, I just wanted you guys to know that we just got words of the the infrastructure bill just went through, kind of has a part in there, so before that, that you guys weren't eligible for any of the tax incentives that regular residential people were. And they changed that now, so you guys are, if we do put it into the jail or whatever, we can get up to a thirty percent. It's in lieu of taxes, but it's a, it's a, it'd be a cash payment back to the county from the government, from the federal government to, to do it, so you've got thirty percent of that, you know, we had our guy just rough it out.
So what do they base that on? We don't pay that.
They base it on the total cost of the thing that it's good for the nation to have, and we figure that our guy that we let look at it from, uh, Blue Sky Solar thought that we needed about a forty-four K system at the jail. He thought that they could probably do that for about eighty-three thousand dollars. We're also, uh, we're working on that twenty-five thousand dollar grant, and we've been pretty much assured of getting that. And then if we get a thirty percent rebate from the government, it would be, it's looking like twenty or thirty thousand dollars as a bonus for, for an investment for twenty-five years. So I just want you guys to be aware of that. One of the things that, if you could and Luann always asks me if I got any action items, so this isn't an action item, but it's something that you guys should think about putting in when you go to your budgets or whatever. If you could just put in a line holder for that just some amount of money, because one, one of the grants that we're applying for says it's this budgeted. And so we can say it was, you know, I, I don't know, you've got, we, we were always just gonna use, it was budgeted for electricity for the jail, but if you had a line item in there wouldn't have to bust the budget or anything like that. But then, uh, we can see if we get this grant, we, we can put it out for bids and see if, uh, you guys, uh, wanna do it.
What do you think is your estimate for that line item?
The whole thing?
I'm just saying, I mean, are you?
Oh, I was thinking.
Twenty thousand?
Thousand dollars, yeah.
I would venture a yes, that you might wanna push that, but if you got twenty-five, if you get both and you're fifty, but then you got thirty-three left.
Right.
According to the estimate, but yeah, thirty-five probably.
Yeah.
I, I mean, just so as long as we put something in.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I didn't know if you wanted me to put five thousand in or?
Well, you know, I.
Not that we couldn't draw it from another.
I wouldn't wanna hurt your chances of getting another buy award.
Were you able to obtain the information that we talked about yesterday?
Okay. Yeah, I talked to John and, uh, he's handling it, but I haven't seen anything that, that they got anything done.
He just left.
Yeah.
So what's some lead time after you get a contract for so far? Is that so far behind like everything else, or?
I, I can't answer that, Larry, I don't know.
Seems like everything is.
Well, it's just, and I don't know where, where all the people that used to work went.
Well, you know, they don't have to work and you still get paid.
All right, well, that's all I had for you, but we could.
Appreciate the update.
Do that, yeah, it looks like, uh, things are going, going good for us right now.
Okay.
All right.
Give us something, let me know if you need something.
All right, thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Did you read the, um, conservation minutes? There's a readout on that, solar power, the savings on?
Yeah.
Electric.
Incredible, cause.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you wanna see if Beth's available to come over, or do you wanna do yours, Lisa?
Um, mine is very short, so yes, I can. I just need a motion to approve the minutes of the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two proceedings, I've written by Audrey Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Second, the motion and second to approve the application of the minutes of the previous meeting, all those in favor?
I, I.
Need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of two hundred and eighty-one thousand, twenty-one dollars and eighty cents.
So moved, I know there was.
Hundred and thirty-nine thousand was in there for the roof.
That looks nice.
It does, and Lee, and the fair board's very happy.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, I talked to Lou, she's very appreciative.
And it was much needed.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And they ran it out of buckets.
And the Historical Society's happy too. All those in favor?
I.
I, motion carried.
I'll be a big savings on heat too with an extra.
Um, yes, I did. And that's all that I have for the board today.
Do you wanna do your thing?
I'm not gonna dig one either.
Where did you find the abstract for?
You know what, so I can speak really briefly about that. Um, I really honestly did not think that we had it. So the good news is I did find one in our fireproof safe that we have over in the office. And sort of do it, so we do have a fireproof safe, that's also where we put all of our absentee ballots at, after people voted here in the office and what we received back in the mail. And in the bottom of this fireproof safe, we have many, um, abstracts. And where I thought it was going to be, it wasn't, so I just kept looking, and it's not very thin, or it's not very thick, it's very thin. But it was done back in nineteen eighty-eight, which would be when we acquired the property, and it appears to me at then county attorney Kaz Long is who directed to get an abstract. So that's really the good news, is that we have it, it won't take long, the estimate from the abstract office was three to five, three to eight hundred dollars to update it. I can't imagine, because obviously since the county's owned it.
Well, there's no leads or anything.
There's nothing to put into it, so I would probably lean on the lighter side than the heavier side of that estimate, and they said just get two weeks notice, and so that's just really good news, yeah.
Yeah. I guess with an update with that, while you're talking about the Welcome Center, the subject inspection did not pass, so we will decide, no, we will decide, uh, how that's going, we'll see what the, what comes in for offers and see what their intentions are to use it for before we go spend money on.
So it may not pass, is the tanks okay or not?
No.
And the field isn't either.
I, I think the ironic thing that happened is that as I, on Friday, as I was standing in the hallway, um, and there was a gentleman that was kinda looking around, and I said, sir, can I help you? And long story short, he wanted information on the Welcome Center. So I did visit with this individual just for a few minutes and, um, Linda Bailey walked down the hall, which is from East Iowa Realty. So I connected this gentleman to Linda to talk about, and I said, you know, we've got this going, this going, and at least I said, this is what we, we know about. Um, so he was definitely interested in, in seeing the building, and I said, well, we're in the process of trying to get it cleaned out, so I said, just, just wait a little bit. Um, I assume that that'll be done here shortly.
Water test come back good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did see that.
Water was tested good.
Yeah, so, and I, and I explained this to the gentleman that the water test was fine, I said, I am going to assume at that point, I didn't know, but I, there was an assumption that that the septic tank probably wouldn't pass, I had visited with Elizabeth, so I said, we're being honest and open about this, but, um, you know, you, you need to, you need to make your own decision.
Depending on what, yeah, I mean, we can tell as is, or you know what the situation calls for, you know? Of the zoning or what they might use, so.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll deal with it when it arises.
Yeah.
So the field is out in front of it, I wonder how close to the friendly line that is.
The what's out there?
The field?
The septic field. Well, the tank is way west of the building.
In the timber.
Really.
It's in the trees.
Yeah, we had to, we had to cut through the timber to get to find the lid, and we found the tanks, it's got twelve foot risers on it.
What? Twelve foot risers?
Yeah.
Oh.
So it's big.
Yeah. Yeah.
Wow, okay, Luann.
Sorry about that. Subject there a little bit.
Well, you were on subjects already, so. All right, calendar for this week. Um, tomorrow, October twenty-sixth, at nine AM is an Isaacs meeting regarding their new logo. And that meeting is by Zoom for Larry, and it's optional for you, you don't have to attend. Um, five-thirty tomorrow is the Cookett River Watershed Management Authority meeting, um, in Monticello or by Zoom, I think. Also for you.
Pretty much.
In person.
In person.
In person, okay. Um, seven o'clock tomorrow night is the Jackson County Emergency Medical Services Association, uh, that meeting is in Sebula, and Mike usually attends that. Thursday, October twenty-seventh, at noon is the Bellevue Leadership Committee by Zoom, also for Mike. And at one o'clock that afternoon is the Grantwood City Byway, um, meeting at the McCookerda Chamber Office for Larry. Friday, October twenty-eighth, seven AM is the McCookerda Leadership Team, also for Larry, probably in the same building, I'm not sure about that. Um, ten AM on Friday morning is some of the Judicial Department of Corrections meeting in Davenport for Larry. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, November first, at nine AM. Uh, and that afternoon at three PM will be a green space redevelopment meeting at the McCookerda Library or by Zoom for Larry. So that. Yes. Tuesday, yep. That's all.
Leadership team on seven in the morning, is that not a Zoom? Has been.
It has been a Zoom. Did I zoom in there?
No.
Okay. Um, it's, I don't think they've met any other way, have they?
Wait, and just wearing pajamas to it.
That's not doing my camera.
Thanks, Luann. Okay, now we'll be joined by Jeanie Collins-Hire, uh, Jackson County Weed Commissioner. Good morning.
Good morning.
Warren.
Weed, you're dying to see that.
Yep. We're done for a season.
That many weeds?
Yeah.
That's a pretty good list.
Yeah. So we use, I was at a meeting, um, center point, your center junction, center. Those many parks, and one of the roadside persons were there, and they said, I think that's this new mix they use, like twenty-five different wildflowers and different things like that. And it hits on all the soil types that are in the county. And they said they can pretty much seed it, blanket seeded down road ditches. And just by driving down the road, you can tell what soils are there because different flowers grow in different areas. I thought that was interesting.
Yeah, that is.
And it's good for the herbs and insects and whatever, it's just I don't know if we're doing that or not, probably not.
But we haven't got any mixes yet, so, but, uh, we're eligible through, uh, I will living, we trust, and so.
Okay.
We'll be eligible for some courtesy.
And some of the natural ones. What do you wanna call it? Invasive species. Pretty right, too.
Yeah, better for soil health.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'll fill you in on, I guess, what happened weed commissioner wise this year, so eight complaints is what I got. Three of them were right aways, and two, well, I sprayed all three, one's kinda gonna be a work in progress over the years, so. Um, and it's one that, uh, one side of the road is Jackson County and the other side of the road is Dubuque County, and Dubuque County is having the same invasive on their side of the road, so I don't know how it's gonna work out.
Or by Washington though.
Yeah.
By Washington.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Does it have a weed commissioner?
They do, I believe he's on Dubuque County Conservation, I think it's Nate's sister. Cause he's an E D assistant director, I think he is still.
Very good place to contact. Very good place to contact to see if something can be done here. Something like he's going to do something and still don't come back.
It's probably going to be an ongoing battle, but. See what we can accomplish. Two of them were city ordinance issues and that got passed on that way, and they dealt with it. Two were private property, um, they were male letters. One didn't take care of adaptive letter, so it became a certified letter. Um, for, uh, order to destroy, and then they did do that before it escalated for us.
Good.
And then one was unfounded, basically not something that pained to weed commissioner. That was my complaint for the year.
Well, that don't sound too bad.
No.
Um, I did read where you are doing some spraying, you know?
Yep, um, I guess I brought a list here roadside wise, I guess I can show you on that, too, what, what I've tried to accomplish over the years. Um, I've worked on poison, some poison hemlock early, that was two hundred and thirteenth Avenue. I know maybe the streets get jumbled together, maybe they mean a lot to you, but, um, Japanese knotweed up on Washington Mills Road. Um, sprayed that multiple attempts to try to control that. Um, did some fragmities and candidate thistle spraying on Rockdale Road, both invasives. And I did quite a bit of work with TSL on the, I don't know if any of you know what TSL actually looks like, but if you go down the Miles Highway. It's spread pretty much the whole stretch of it, so the past two years, I've been quite a bit of spraying, try to control that. And on, um, Bellevie Cascade Road, I sprayed for that. Starting to see a pop up different areas. Try to work on that. Must thistle sprayed that. Helped by Herschel up eighty fifth street. That, and, um, and I've been working on, um, spray regrowth, so basically what happens is secondary roads comes in with the fall, in the fall with the brush mowers and cuts it down. And then you get regrowth off of those stumps and June, July would be optimal time to actually go, go in and spray that regrowth and then try to kill. So those don't keep re-sprouting.
Your timeframe when they, after they cut that you should spray. I thought it.
Oh. Well, if you're just doing stump treatment, you should do it within half hour.
Yeah.
But what I'm actually doing is wait for those stumps to regenerate growth and then fill one in and spray in the road niche.
Can I ask what you're using for that, are you using girlen for that?
Um, actually for the re-sprout, I am using Duracor. That is recommended for that. And it's, uh, explained to me through Everheart that that's, uh, basically the new graze on.
Oh. And that, does that take a license?
Yes, restricted.
Um. Well, I got a question, i- is this a wild cucumber thing that grows like in the fence lines and can just take over a cornfield and swallow it up?
Well, I hadn't seen it until this summer, it went up Z thirty four, and I'd actually seen where, yes, it looks like it's going out across the cornfield.
So if you want to see it in action, under Bellevie Cascade, just a mile off of sixty two on the south side of the road, it was on the fence line and they come in and it must have got in. I know they walked a cornfield when the corn was this high, and they didn't see anything in there. But if you see where they come in and sprayed that with the helicopter, I mean, there's a patch, half acre that it swallowed up. Now, now it died there, but. They claim that when you hit that with a combine, it'll just suck the whole thing into the combine and do some hellacious damage.
Night wood.
You'll see in cor- in cornfields right now where they've gone out and around, I, we've seen several of them, we've been out.
I mean, you can see this one from the road, you know, it's, it's just east of my place, but you can see where they, when they sprayed it, where it died, and I mean, it's a large patch.
Yeah.
And he almost lost his whole eighty acres, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, I did see that, like I said, Z thirty four this summer in the bottoms there, just.
Which one's Z thirty four?
That's the one that goes to Preston.
Okay.
Okay.
From, from fifty two?
Yep.
Yeah.
So do they burn that, not burn, don't anybody burn, but is that how you get rid of it? Do you burn it, do you chemical it?
Yes, I mean. I would think you'd have to spray it, um, you can pull it.
Oh.
Really, so is that what we're talking about, is that wild cucumber thing, is that what that is? Or what, yeah, it is.
So would one plant just take off and go, or does it keep cropping?
Well, it gets seeds on it, just. That's why you don't want one plant. And spread along ways, yes.
Yeah, you want, don't want to run it through the combine because you're reseeding.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
One in the combine, too, yeah. As a combine operator, I knew what that looked like.
Okay. Right now, I'm working on some fall foliage application of push honey sucker. So basically, if you drive the road ditches right now, when you see the green, the shrub that is still green yet, that is push honey sucker, so.
They get them little red berries on?
Yep.
Yeah.
And they, they go over, the birds like to do their part and spread that around.
I'm sure they nasty.
Yeah.
Come back like twice as bad as it was with you.
Yep.
And that's not a good thing, right? I've seen some of that around. Over on there.
What's it called?
Bush.
Did you have a question, Tom?
Yeah, but I.
Oh, I didn't know if you were. What, what she was doing along the road.
roadside vegetation.
Okay. Motion to accept and authorize signatures.
Remove.
Motion in a second, all those in favor? I, motion carry.
Nice report.
He said, do you have a copy for, um, Jeanie to sign?
I do.
Okay, Beth, do you want to come forward?
Sure.
Joined by Beth Carolack, Jackson County Treasurer. Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
You all have a chance to review the twenty eighteen agreement update.
That's the one we spoke about, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It is, yeah, so Mike had emailed me to see if Bruce or I had any problems with the updates, and my answer was no. Um, we don't. That, the biggest change is on page six, section F, where counties are now required to replace a vacancy for an employee who does drive tests within sixty days of the vacancy. So that would be Bruce and Jen, they both provide drive tests.
Not for commercial.
Right, we don't do C D L skills tests, and that's the giving the drives and doing the walkarounds for C D Ls. We don't do those. And a lot of the changes, um, what threw out here, kind of talk about the C D L skills tests, which we don't provide, we do C D L knowledge testing. But we do not do C D L skills testing. So that's kind of section E on page ten wouldn't apply to us then. Um, another part of it that talked about providing the wired or wireless internet connectivity already, so we already do that. Right here. Yeah, they are plugged into ours, our internet already, so. That's in there. Uh, but yeah, just the biggest paragraph about, um, us, if we're not able to provide a drive test, an employee to give drive tests, that we would have to fill that vacancy within sixty days, and we have to let the D O T know that we're unable to provide that service right away.
And if you don't do it in sixty days?
I don't know.
They're gonna provide somebody.
Doesn't say that.
Yeah. Every day.
Yeah, I think they would be providing someone for us before sixty days if we were not able to provide the service, because those people that need those drive tests can't go that long. They can't even go sixty days without having one, so there would have to be another means for them to get tested.
Out of his place.
What was that?
Dave Skilings is doing that as a business.
So you might be talking about the, an early, what is that called? Early entry level drive training for C D Ls. That's that new, and that's mentioned in here, too.
They've been doing that a long time, though.
He's up on the new, there was something in code that just changed now for C D L specifically. Um, that's on page nine, commercial driver's license testing. Um, it just says that we are now required to verify whether an applicant has com- complied with the applicable entry lever, level driver training requirements under whichever part of the code it's listed there. So that's just something new that we have to do since this was signed. That we have to look for to make sure they've done that before we can have them. So that was, that, I did have Sarah, um, review this, changes to this, too, to make sure she didn't have any concerns, and she did not.
So what is the pleasure of the board?
What, what's on the agenda to approve what the?
The D O T twenty eight agreement for driver's license services.
Make a motion to approve.
I would say.
Motion in a second. All those in favor? Motion carry.
I just need a board chair signature, and I just send this to the D O T, do you want to do that now?
I can do that now.
And then there was only two highlighted issues. Also, it's in the whole, yeah.
Yeah, in the whole thing, yeah. Standing here and pretty, there's not a very big spot.
There you go.
Thank you.
Uh, this time we'll recess, I'm telling her, joined by Tom Devine or Tony Shekels. This this time we'll reconvene the meeting, and we're joined by Tony Shekels, Jackson County, um, Veterans Affairs Commissioner.
Morning.
Morning.
Thanks for having me. Uh, before we get started, I wanted to thank the county and all the employees for the card I got for my father's death, that was very appreciated, thank you. We've been busy, so in August, uh, the president signed the PAC Act, which grants, uh, twenty new presumptuous to Gulf War veterans, two presumptive Vietnam veterans, and it adds, some service time in Guam, Thailand, Laos, Cambodia, Johnson and Toll, their conceding agent orange exposure, which is pretty big. Um, there's a lot of Vietnam veterans here in, um, Jackson County, who this will affect and, and be helpful for. And they added those two presumptives for the Vietnam veterans is, uh, well, it's, it's a blood disorder and then hypertension. And most of us know, you know, we, we all get hypertension, the big thing about that is, uh, if we can get them service connected for the disability of hypertension, uh, that'll may not monetarily be a big deal for those veterans, but in the end, it may be a huge deal for their family if they pass, because if you die of a service connected disability, um, your family's eligible for compensation. So, um, and usually when I look at death certificates and as a law enforcement officer, I saw a lot of, um, unnatural deaths, there's always listed hypertension, so that's kind of a big deal. Um, and that'll be, you know, that's a positive thing for the Vietnam veterans, and I just want to make sure they're getting into our office and seeing us. It's absolutely, so. Uh, we had quite a little outreach, I had some success in the Coco with, uh, pension talk. Um, we did coffee and donuts this last weekend in Bellevue, uh, I placed an advertisement in the paper that ran, ran for four weeks, or was only four weeks, but it was every other week for eight weeks. And that made a big difference getting people in our office. Uh, our numbers are up, I did include in that packet. If you look at it, this is monthly, the compensation that's coming in, and this is just compensation, so not healthcare benefits. Uh, and it kind of breaks down what compass, compensations coming into Jackson County on a monthly basis. Uh, five hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars this last month. It has gone up every month since January by three to four thousand dollars. And I, I included all the forms back to January, and I'm not saying that's, to my credit, it's, it takes so long to solve or get a decision on a compensation claim that, you know, a lot of these were done a year ago before I started, you know, some of them obviously are from, you know, it, it just means that we're busy. The numbers are constantly going up in Jackson County. And we're constantly losing veterans, if we look in the paper, we see veterans passing away all the time, so. It's, it's, we're, we're still growing that number every month, which I hope to continue. Congresswoman Ashley Henson met with the, uh, Board of Veterans Affairs here a couple of weeks ago, it was a really nice discussion, uh. I, I think she's got a positive outlook on helping veterans, although I don't know after this election if she's a representative anymore.
That's cool.
So, uh, but it was a, it was a good, it was a good meeting. Uh, so we're busy, our numbers are up. We're getting compensation back into the county, uh, the office seems to be running smoothly. I haven't heard any complaints. I, I think unless your gentleman have an issue or something's come up.
I haven't heard anything but good, good things.
So. I'm pretty happy with how it's going.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate that the numbers are going up because of the fact, you know, you're, it's been a while since these people are taking advantage of what they should be getting.
They learned it.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
I appreciate you, uh, working, working for them and getting them to participate.
I think the outreach, and I, I think in the past, maybe what you didn't have was somebody with my flexibility to be able to go to the meetings and be out at night. Uh, and I think that outreach is making a big difference, we're getting more people in the door. Our numbers last month, uh, were higher than a year ago, and, and not that I think Christie and Debbie did a good job, it's just, uh, it, just people seeing you in the community at the, at the veteran service organizations and they.
Disability is so important.
Yes.
And having you there and out with people is a real plus.
So, yeah, it's, I think that's a, that's a big positive. And I will continue that moving forward.
Sounds wonderful.
All right. I know we used to have a yearly, like, social event, if you want to call it, or.
So, then, and they did do that, and in talking with the my commission, uh, they felt they weren't getting the payback on that. Uh, that we're getting new people in the door. Uh, not that if, if, uh, we were, we were just talking about it actually at our last meeting, and maybe this summer we would do burgers and brats here in McCoken or something, maybe at the Eagles Club like they do every weekend, where the, the commission can be, you know, offer burgers and block, block, and have veterans stop in. Uh, what I do plan on doing in the future, because I sometimes I think we skip, McCoken again, in the past may have gotten skipped with events, uh, through the Veterans Affairs Office. I plan on doing coffee and donuts, uh, after the holidays in, in the Coca uh, for veterans and get them in the door that way, it's a kind of a cheap way, and we get veterans in and we get them signed up for benefits, and it's worked. In Bellevue, and it's worked in Sebula, I just haven't had the opportunity to do it in McCoken yet. I was hoping to do something, uh, kind of with the brewery. But in November, on every Thursday, November, the brewery here in town, the nice thing they do is they donate a dollar for pine sold on Thursdays to a, uh, nonprofit organization. They're doing that for the Veterans of Foreign Wars here in Coca in November, every Thursday. But I've been invited as a Veterans Affairs Office to have a table there and, you know, hand out some t-shirts and, and get, do some veterans awareness. So I'll be there at least a couple of Thursdays, uh, in November to, you know, just to make sure I'm touching base with all the veterans here in the Coca. And then plus, I plan on coffee and donuts after the holidays, and then next summer, we're gonna do some burgers and brats. I don't know if we'll ever do another big meal, because the, my commission didn't feel they're getting the payback on that, that they.
Okay, so, I mean, have you done like, um, kind of touch base with the brewery in Bellevue also?
I did, I, I emailed back and forth with the brewery in Bellevue, um.
So it's under new ownership.
Right, it's a new ownership now, and, and it's not that I, I, we will do something there, I think my goal is to reach those younger veterans, I think Vietnam veterans, Korean War veterans, the World War Two veterans know about us, and, and they come and see us. Although sometimes I'm surprised, I'll get one come in the door who's never been. Although sometimes I'm surprised. I'll get one come in the door who's never been to our office. But the Gulf War veterans like to do a lot of the, a lot of the stuff that we do can be done on your own. But sometimes in the process of doing that, you make some mistakes that maybe get a claim denied or. It doesn't go as smoothly as you'd like, or then we can come in and help. So my goal is to make sure we're reaching all the Gulf War veterans. Because I mean. There's a lot of issues involved with having served in the Gulf War and we want to just make help them make sure that their pay was getting done right and they're getting the compensation they're.
So now we hear some major issues with the smoke pits or whatever.
That's the, that's what the PAC Act is addressing is the toxic chemicals from being over in the Gulf.
Have you done a just talk?
I've been on just talk several times, yes. I don't know that with just talk, I'm raising the Gulf War veterans, but maybe one or two. But I do, I do enjoy going on this. Yes, I can go on just talk today when they.
My stepson was in Iraq. They were using a diesel and jet fuel for gas control.
In Afghanistan, they had to burn everything because if they released anything, like they buried it or whatever, especially the batteries, it would be dug up and used on an IED. So they're burning lithium batteries. They're burning it. So all the plastic, they had to burn everything. I mean, that we don't know. And then they had to do it right there where they're at because they have to guard it while they're doing it. Otherwise, it's going to be used against them. Same thing was happening in Iraq. So we're burning things in the chemicals in the air. It just created. A really bad deal. It's very similar to Agent Orange in Vietnam. Except we were that we've been there much longer at this point.
Yeah, yeah. Appreciate it. Well, thanks for your efforts.
Okay.
Appreciate you coming in.
And I'll see you in a quarter or actually we're going right into budget. So remember those numbers. We're going into budget.
At this time, we'll be joined by Sally Davies, Jackson County's representative on the NEI three A board.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Good.
Good. What do you know?
You know.
I know so many things I can't tell any. No, I'm kidding. As everyone is aware, Shannon has resigned from her position at the the meal site here in the Kokona. The Northeast Iowa area and aging is looking to ha- replace that position with. A person that would cover both Bellevue and the Kokona meal site. Bumping up the hours so that there's enough hours to make it justifiable for someone to work. But spending two days a week in the Kokona this week and three days in Bellevue and then flipping back and forth. So every other Friday. Would be a different at the other site. Right now, the meals that are going out of the Kokona site. There's roughly fifteen home delivered meals every day, fifteen to eighteen, excuse me. And then it varies on what they do do in-house. In Bellevue, they're serving meals one day a week for sure, sometimes twice a week if they have someone there to do it. But there has to be someone in the site to serve the meals. They do cook in the Bellevue location Trio is there, but they do not serve the meal. So they have to have either Shannon or a volunteer to serve a meal. The the home delivered out of Bellevue, I can't tell you the exact number, but I I believe I was told somewhere between fifteen and twenty. Home delivered meals as well. And that could include the congregate, but I'm not, please don't quote me on that one. Right now. Statewide and industry wide, they're telling us with the federal dollars for the food program. They're at a halt. They can't add extra more people if they call today. They can't add. There's a waitlist. They've added a priority list to how they decide who gets, you know. If they have already been a congregant, if they're going to the site and eating. That will push them up on the site if they are on the list faster if. They need home delivered now because maybe they had a fall or something and they can't get out. So that is in place and they're using this point system. A lot of this locations. Have went to mom's meals for rural. Or in our case in Jackson County. Stalkers and gerronomos are both making food and delivery. And there's between the two of them, I believe there's over fifty meals every week going out. And that's part of that same food program. So our county is serving a lot of people. What they're finding in locations like ours. If there's not a person there to drive it or another entity to drive and make things happen, the life itself. Say the musical entertainment or activities of some sort to to know who the people are and what they want. It it's not happening. And we can kind of see that right here, right now. The board. That has been chosen to oversee this particular building here in Jackson County. Has been trying with some. There's cards going on. There's potluck Fridays, which honestly negates. The food nutrition program because they don't utilize that thing except for home delivered. But it brings the people together, which is important as well. It's that social piece. So looking for ideas on how to grow that is always a great idea. There are concerns in the the property itself. It needs some maintenance. No default to anyone that goes in there or that works there, but there's holes in the walls where something was taken down and there's just a big hole. There've been some quick fixes with duct tape that look kind of tacky. So I I think that those could be taken care of in a different manner.
Well, that's one of the things Lisa and I, when I was in earlier this week or end of last week, we were talking about it. And I guess we kind of thought maybe it was important that the board. Took onsite at some of our buildings that we own and and checked them out to see. Because we always hear Marty's down there fixing the plumbing in the bathrooms and all of this stuff, but. You know, I I guess Sally and I had a conversation and I had a conversation with. Some women from the senior center and. There's just a lot of unhappiness in what's going on or what is not going on in the Kokona. And so I told Sally I was going to be meeting with these people and I did and it just so happened. Lisa was still here and and one of the questions that they asked was about our lease and. Currently our lease within the I three A doesn't expire till. Two thousand and thirty-three. And they also asked. How much rent any I three A was paying to the county for the use of the building and they're not paying any rent. It's rent free. But I I guess, you know. It there just seems to be. I I don't know what it is. I I know that they talked about. And I'm just going to say it, how awful the food was. Nobody wants to come because the food is awful. It looks like a. A TV dinner that should have been eaten a couple of weeks ago. And they there, there's just no incentive for people to come. And I know that they were talking about how they used to have. And they were told they couldn't come anymore. And people were happy unhappy about that. They used to, they have used to bring people in and they had. Did crafts and stuff like that. They had their own craft materials that they purchased that wasn't part of the senior center and. They were told they couldn't do crafts down there anymore. And, you know, they're not having the card parties that they used to have or. They're just not having people come. And I'm I'm sure part of that is they got out of the habit during COVID. And right now, from what I understand, there's no incentive to go. There's not, it's not welcoming. It's 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 just an atmosphere that people, I mean. They can open a can of soup at home. So I think that we, we need to really discuss this with NE three A and see what their plans for the future are. Because if there aren't any plans in the future to make it better. Then we might as well see if we can break our lease and we can rent that to somebody else or use it for something else. Because it's not being used for what it should be. Sorry.
Nope.
And that's what I told you on the phone.
I don't disagree that something has to change. I will tell you that when I had conversation with Janet Balls, who is the food nutrition supervisor after you and I had spoke. Most successful. Senior locations or nutrition locations that see the most activity have more than one party involved in making life happen. So if it is a county building and there's a. Staff person and activities person that makes that happen, their goal is to focus on the food and nutrition to make sure that. No one is going without a meal if they need it in that specific population. To make sure that they're aware of resources available to bring in nutrition programs. They can do all of that under the federal dollars that they're allowed. The 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 musical entertainment doesn't fall under the federal dollars. The crafts don't fall under the federal dollars. I do believe that there was huge. Discredit done when the communication for the folks that were said that they couldn't come. That was huge, but that has been rectified. They're coming back. And those are the folks from Imagine the Possibilities that were using that location for their day program because they don't have one. And I think that's a great partnership for our community. It's a huge. So.
Well, it says, you know what, when I was talking to them, the three ladies that came in and she said. Now they have was having to take them like out to Walmart just to walk the halls because they didn't have a place. They didn't have the old Aldi's building. That Jerry was letting them use space there so they could have a a place to congregate, but then. That changed and she said, we have to take them from place to place just because we don't have a place for them to go. And it was always so convenient to be able to go to. The senior center and do our crafts and do whatever they needed to do or wanted to do. And once they were told they couldn't come there anymore, then that's when they had to start going around to different places.
I will tell you that that was the case in a lot of communities that the folks that they serve are in because in Duwet it was the same thing. They're going to a different location on a regular basis, but trying to be out in the community. Their program is 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 a. A government driven program that they're under, so they got to follow some goals too and be out. And it's hard to find those places. I think that. Our. Folks that are there do appreciate. Them being there. The ladies that play cards, where's the kids today? You know, they might be about the same age, but where's the kids? You know, so I don't think that that partnership should go wrong. If it has to come from the board of supervisors to say this is what we want to do, I don't think that's a bad thing.
No, I I truly believe.
Change has to happen.
I really do believe that if we're going to make that place successful, it has to have a better partnership.
It does. And 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 I think that there's going to have to be some. More governance or buy-in or I don't know the right terminology, but coming from the supervisors or coming from the county. The food and nutrition piece is just that it's a food nutrition piece. Northeast Iowa area and aging has a lot of other programs, but right now the only piece that's in there is food and nutrition. So dropping the food, getting that and then exchanging all the way around the board.
And I'll tell you, it used to be that I don't know how many women were down there to quilt. They always had a quilt on the loom or whatever it was. Yeah, sure.
They're gone or not able. So. When Jack and I chatted, I said, okay, so. This is only a question you answer in your head. What's a senior citizen to you? Because I tell you, when I was four, that person might have been twenty. When I was twelve, that my person might have been forty. I'm fifty and that person might be ninety-five. You know, it changes as we age, but I look around the room. What are the things you want to do? What would you like to see? That's what we got to look at. And is it a change in the name? Are we looking for an activity center? That's focused on adults? I mean, what is it? As far as.
I have no objections to taking senior citizens out of it.
Me too. And the adult date sign is still on there. It says there's an adult day program sponsored by Jackson County Senior or Jackson County Board of Supervisors and that's not true. That's that's not true. That sign needs to change, but. As far as Northeast Iowa area and aging, they are interviewing. They have a couple applicants. They're going to interview. It will start the first of November. They they had the person that does the interviewing in their HR had a family emergency and it's not able to be there until then. So they do have a couple interviews to fill that piece, but how it looks on the other side for what we want as a community. I mean, I.
Great that they have some interviews to do, but I hope they're taking into consideration what we want. And not just what NE I three A want.
So what do we want? Do we want more activities? Do we want interaction? I mean, at at Clover Ridge, do you have activities going on daily bingo?
Yeah.
Music, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, same same way in Bellevue. I mean, they got somebody coming in and it's a lot of volunteer stuff though.
Yeah, it is. It is a lot of.
There's people coming and playing, playing guitar and sing for a while and then they come in and do bingo and then they have a card tournament. I I don't know, I guess, but. Is is there, you know?
I just think the morale got so bad that nobody cared.
I I I don't.
I don't believe that anybody really tried too hard because. It didn't make a difference.
It felt.
And how can it got so bad? From for what reason did it get bad? Because after the pandemic or before or during, they wouldn't let them in and everybody lost interest. Or it was the way it was.
I think I think there's a lot of variables. You've said a lot of things that very well could be because as a person, I I couldn't go in there. You know, that was closed for so long. So what you do, you find other things to occupy your time. It's hard to come back from that. It takes time. And if we're talking about an aging population, a lot of those folks have either. Passed on, went to assisted living or long-term care facility that were there pre-pandemic. And if we expect those people to come back, it's not going to happen.
But there's also new people that are aging.
But there hasn't been any incentive to come in and to Jack's defense or to his point. We have to figure out what that piece is to bring them back. Right. So do we have someone that can make that happen on a regular basis? The Northeast Iowa area on aging right now is looking at a food and nutrition specialist.
That's it.
That's it, because that's where their federal money is that they have for this location. So could that be pushed further? You know, it's a good question to ask.
It has to be if it's going to be successful.
Do they have?
It has to be more than just.
It does.
Legislative things, you know, whether they get more funding for an activity director.
Right.
Yeah, broader broader use of that funding.
And I don't know that they have an activity director in their budget because again, they're working on that food and nutrition piece, but do. Do we as a county? Do we have a resource that way? I mean, the the property itself is huge. That's a huge piece that the county gives basically. But to manage it, how does that work? And who's got, who's going to do that? I'm not sure that I'm answering questions or making more questions.
Yeah, where do you go?
Where do you start? You can't eat an elephant.
It sounds like Bellevue's got a pretty good thing going.
Their city also backs them.
Yeah, and I would say they slipped some too from previous pandemic, but yeah, I mean, they were really active, had a program going.
They did, and that was based on the city's push with the food and nutrition. So the city kicked in there. And they're really. And they're really working right now to bring that back to that same level.
So I guess with that being said, is is the city McCokka involved with? Seniors at all.
So something is coming up with uh before H building. Is a commercial kitchen. Could we have somebody that cooks right there? So it's.
Well, we have a kitchen there. There is a full kitchen there. Don't you remember Marty asked you to go down and empty the the grease traps?
Yeah. And you got a lovely job.
Cause that's exactly what I said, you know, why are they cooking our meals for our people in in McCokka in Bellevue and. And bringing them over when we have a and they says, well, they have a nice big kitchen. I said, so do we. We have a nice big kitchen, so.
That kitchen also, just so you're aware, that kitchen also. Feeds Dubuque and and.
That's what you said.
Yeah, so it's not just here. There's food that goes to Dyersville. There's food that goes to Dubuque. There's food that goes to McCokka. Yeah, it's called Creo. Yeah, that's the food company that's doing it.
But you have to find the right person, though, that has the the drive, so to speak.
To make anything happen.
That's right.
Absolutely.
Have that energy.
You do.
Have to find that person that has the energy.
Again, if you're gonna, even if you did get somebody that would go in there and prepare meals. They're limited by this food and nutrition thing that you can't put no dash of salt in it anymore, you know.
Well, there is that.
You know, I mean, that. That's why it don't taste good anymore. We ain't got the butter in it. We don't have the salt in it.
And that's that's the government at its finest.
I get it.
Healthier for you. So for those that are deprived of food and and maybe can't get it any other way.
Honey, if I'm eighty-five, you give me whatever I want, okay?
Let's talk on different.
I guess what you said earlier, um we have so many. Very few in McCokka, very few in um uh Preston. But yet your restaurants. You said there's fifty people a day that are getting food.
Delivered a week.
A week is getting. They they send it for so many days. So.
But they they're delivered, so they, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a nice program, you know.
Meal and two cold meals or a cold meal and that, you know, they get a couple. At a time.
And that takes away from the people coming to the facility.
Well, sure does.
If somebody can deliver to my door, especially the next four months.
And they probably.
They have to meet criteria to deliver though. They can't get out, so they're not gonna get that food if they. It, you know, there's a potential that they're not gonna get to eat other than maybe of the sandwich or whatever that they can make on their own. They are not gonna have a hot meal. So it's not that they're gonna deliver to you because you're an able body and you can get out and come and get it. You're not just picking on you. But they have to meet a criteria to be able to have that delivered meal.
Well, I think that, um as I said to you on the phone, um uh there's more to come.
Yes.
And I think that maybe we.
Well, I think they're a good discussion, man. We need the important, we need, you know.
And we need to really talk to the powers that be on NEI three A and let them know. Our dissatisfaction, I'm calling it, and the need that we need to do something more than we're doing now.
With that being said, Jack, I mean, any I three is government.
They're federally.
Okay, so this also goes back to our legislators and they should be in this conversation.
And.
And.
I think that what what we're talking about, the northeast Iowa on ar- area on aging has this much money that they can delegate. To food and nutrition. We're looking here, we want activity in life. Yeah, and we want it based around food nutrition, but they only have food nutrition dollars. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So where do we come up with the other dollars to make that happen? Do they have them? I don't know. I've not asked that question.
We have no idea.
No, as far as activities, I. Caregiver resources, they have education resources, they have um crisis intervention resources. Those kind of resources through the northeast Iowa area on aging for the aging population.
Cause they used to have social workers and everything down there that worked with the.
Yeah.
Individuals.
Right, and they they had to pull back again because of federal funding. And where they're located, they are still in our area. But they're just not visible.
Well, can't they can't Biden print some more money off?
I don't know, Jack, you should know.
Burning it off for everything else.
Uh it it could be a combination of city, county, whatever, yeah, but it's conversation to be had for sure.
Absolutely.
Um why did we lose it or what? Is it available? Because if we. Do certain things.
I believe that in the past, there were some county funding into that. For wage and activity and support is my understanding.
Budgeted through. Our board?
Boy, I can't remember ever.
Um that's the way it was presented.
We used to pay a feed any I three. It seems like it was three thousand and eight hundred dollars we. Set aside. We'd have to look back in our record.
Say I don't, I I would look at it.
And how was the adult they have program funded?
I have no idea.
Okay.
So who was in charge of all that at that time? I mean, there had to be a a leader or a director or a what do you wanna call it?
Who was down there for a while? It was kind of part time, but.
Oster was, right?
She was the director?
No. She wanted that. I know she wanted that. That was what. I can't Karen Ozar.
Ozar, yeah.
And she was not funded through here. That was the city.
Well, maybe that's something we need to look at.
I I'd like to go back to one other thing because. As a board, I think we've heard so much about we didn't know. Um and and you know, obviously, we're coming into the winter part. If there's things to the building that need to be done. This is, this would be the perfect time to either you as a board go for on go for tour or we just take Marty down and say, Marty, we need. We need fresh paint. We need a couple of holes taken care of. We need a cracked tile fixed, whatever is down there. We need to know, okay? And I think that's really where we're at with a lot of things in county government. We need to know.
Well, that was my next invitation is the the next meeting that the small board for that particular. Building um is meeting November sixteenth. It's the third Wednesday. Is that correct? Do I get the right date?
Yes.
At nine thirty in the morning, if you wanna come.
Let's let's get that sent to Luann so she can send us an email and put it in my date book and.
And come down and just take a walkthrough.
So. I apologize for being stupid or ignorant here. Is who's in charge down there? Who is there a person in charge?
Well, right now Shannon's still there, but she resigned. She's gonna stay. She's gonna stay with RTA. But she is not going to be working for.
On share. That's what they.
Between.
Yeah, and Shannon does what now? Just McCokka?
She does.
So your program for the food nutrition, does that include someone there lying item for rent payments?
That I can't answer. Um honestly, I I I really can't answer that.
Just where I'm going with that, if we can charge you rent, we could use that money to hire somebody.
Right, so that would be something above my knowledge level.
But they have, we have the building leased to.
Any I agree.
NEI three A till twenty thirty-three with no rent, right? So. We have.
But we did ask Sarah to check in to see if we could break the lease.
I mean. The money's out there to do it and it's not working. Why can't we charge something for rent or?
And just curiosity, once Shannon, you have a new person hired. And Shannon is no longer in charge and she works for RTA, where is her office at? Don't know.
She doesn't have one.
She doesn't have it, no.
So she's just like any other RTA driver. They get called and they get told where they're going to.
So she doesn't have an office in the senior center, okay? I knew that, so there's.
She can have a desk back there. I don't know if she does or not.
So does dispatch call her?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they order, they order the ride through dispatch and dispatch calls her.
Yeah.
Oh.
And dispatch is interviewing, right?
Okay. Now we know, yeah.
Bellevue is unique because they they manage their own and it's all volunteers. Um and that was part of the partnership that they had with the person at the senior center. In Bellevue, after they were done doing food and nutrition, they went to City Time and they managed that piece for them. Um and all the call center for that, but that's a whole different animal than what we have here locally.
Well, we're gonna create a new and and try to create a new animal, so. We appreciate you coming in and as I said, there will be more to come.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Oh, next we have Tom Devine from the Jackson County Area Tourism Association.
Good morning. Information for all of you. And I wanted to bring your attention. First, uh first two sheets are uh just to make you aware. Uh we're doing some co-op advertising through the state of Iowa. I think I mentioned that before. And those are two of the seven co-ops that we're doing. And they just sent this to me and I'm gonna fill these out, but if you have, if you go through those and you. Think of something that you think that we should. Uh promote more than what we do. jot it down, send me an email, send me a text, just let me know your thoughts, cause I'm gonna compile that. Those have to. Go back in the first part of November. So we'll be starting to generate the ads for the first one is for Midwest Living. Uh I'm sorry, not Midwest Living is for um, well, it's for Midwest Living too, but it's for Western Illinois publication. That we've done the last three years, but we're adding Midwest Living. The next one is Rover. And Rover is a magazine that's designed for day trippers and and uh. The people that, you know, they're always on their phones looking for places, so that's a. That's the, that's the other one. Now, the the other two sheets are some interesting facts that we pulled up. We joined what we what they call a rivalist with the state and that and it gives us an idea. Of who's coming to see us, when they're coming to see us and this. We you can change this up or you can do it by state. What I've done is by Jackson County alone, so these these are just numbers, Jackson County. For twenty twenty-one as well as twenty twenty-two. And the interesting part of it is that we're seeing. Is um is the trips by length of stay in the in the center at the bottom. We're seeing that um from twenty-one to twenty-two, we're seeing a a decrease in those day trips. Which is increasing those one, two, three and four nights, which is good for our hotels and motels and and our. Uh businesses downtown. Uh trips by day of the week uh is traditionally Friday and Saturday and a little bit on Sunday. That's moved a little bit too to where it's spreading out a little bit more, so we have some Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday as well. Which is encouraging. Um. Uh trips by average distance is is interesting in the fact that. We went for uh less than a hundred miles. We went from forty-one point nine percent to sixty-three point six percent, so. There's a. There's a a lot more local people coming, but we also have a big increase in the two hundred fifty to five hundred miles or. As well as five hundred mile plus people coming in from long, long ways away. And where they're coming from up in the top left hand corner, the top origin markets is is where we're finding these people are coming from and. And in every, in both years, Cedar Rapids Waterloo, that area is the is the are the most, you see that?
It's on the backside.
Cedar Rapids.
But you don't have any destination. Top destination.
No, it it doesn't go as far as to where they're going. It gives us when they're coming into Jackson County and how this. How this uh information is derived. You probably explained a little bit better than I can, but uh they have a program, yeah, that that. Pings their phones and tells where these people are and where they where they originated from, so gives us an idea. A real good idea of of who's coming to visit and when they're coming to visit us. No, you can't. It's easy everywhere you go. Um. That's. That's really what's going on. Right now, um we're uh we're vamping it. Like I say, there's there's seven different co-ops that were. That were participating in and we're putting all those together, getting them ready to go, so they're ready to roll out the first part of two thousand twenty-three. Um. We've had, I've had uh move some things out of the welcome center, everything. I think Marty was down there Monday and. And uh.
Were you ready as well?
Yeah.
Did you get your rack?
No, haven't. I'm going down there to get them and and actually I've I've held off on that and the reason is is. That uh we Steve Tebby, our president, and I went down and talked to Sebula Mayor uh last week. Our our thought, our tourism thoughts are is we'd like to help Sebula. Develop, do some things and our first thought was to go to the mayor and find out, do you want to do some things and. Pathetically, yes. So um we're we're working with them. Uh there's some, there's some things that they've had in the works. As far as dredging area out and doing those that uh we feel we can help. We've got some. Uh some politicians that we feel can help us get some move forward in some of these things. In that uh. Visit, we went to Island City Harbor. And. It's it's amazing what they've done and what they're going to do. Great, great things. Went on a tour of their uh. On the water, Airbnbs is what really what they are and some incredible opportunities for people to come and see. Good things in Jackson County. In those discussions with or in those tours, um Kelly Connor is the gal that. Gave us a tour, running things down there. She suggested that ask if they could become a welcome center. And they are, absolutely.
Pretty water trail. I mean, Mississippi would be a water trail too.
Yes, and uh so I said, yeah, we're we'll definitely look at it. She said, we look. Need some help getting some racks and all of that and I said, we've got the racks. We'll get them down to you. We'll get them up and. And we'll keep the all the flyers to you. So there's another opportunity for us to have another welcome center that. It's open seven days a week and we don't have to staff it, so. And they're happy to do it. And I get just on the way over to get confirmation that she got the okay from the process to go ahead with that, so. Do we have another welcome center?
Nice, yeah.
And that's that's really what I have. Any questions that uh you have of what's going on or?
I can take one for on here that you know. Bluegrass Festival, they have it. Eden Valley.
Valley, yeah.
I mean, we were there again this year. It's been going on for forty years, but I was, I mean, there was a fair amount of people there, but. I talked to people after it. It says, oh, when was that again? I didn't hear anything about it, so it's just kind of. I mean, the old the regular core group is still coming, but it needs a little more pushing and advertising.
Absolutely.
And the one they do in Dubuque, Mudlight. Yeah, that is really good too on Sundays. Bring your own stuff and I mean, they have food and you're right on the river, good music and some nice bands and. Lot of lot of cool things to do around and enjoy the. And that's something you can come in on the boat and go to that one. Maybe that could be tied down here too, if they're running the river for vacation.
That's that's great, great point. And really, we have and we've done very, a very good job of. Promoting the caves is the number one attraction for Jackson County. I mean, it's no secret. Uh but there are so many other things that we feel we need to start. The caves are pulling them in by themselves, really. They're they're, they've got their own. Niche, but um I think there's some great other things that we can promote as well.
Do we have Reynolds? And I should know this being in conservation, but do we have Reynolds slips for people traveling on rivers? Um I mean, like you pulled in Sebula, is there a place you could dock and plug in for the night?
I'm sure there is. It, most of those are. Are monthly or yearly.
Yeah, I just wanted to. A night lord. Yeah, I just wanted to just a night lord.
I think there's like six of them in Bellevue, is that correct? Maybe the the conservation does not rent out.
Owens Bruce.
Bruce.
Don't know.
I would think that there were like five or six on the people are hoping are.
And I know there, I know there have been numerous times they've tried to develop those so that they can, especially like the offshore and. And now Sebula that the core is.
United.
United, but that's one of the things that we're looking at seeing if we can get some changes to it.
I was up at McNaw Island and they have a beautiful harbor there. I mean, you walk out on the dock, you can see down. Twenty foot deep and the fish swimming in there and stuff and. I was just curious, I went down and said, what's it cost to pull a boat in here for the night? Because they had all the spots for it. And it was a dollar. I mean, if you had a thirty-foot boat, it's thirty dollars for the night. The motel starts at two hundred.
Yeah.
It's a, I'm just like, wow, and they said, okay, it's not set by how it is. All of the state of Michigan has their set rate. And it doesn't matter if you're there or in some smaller towns, I mean, what a fantastic way to travel. I mean, if you have. Cruisers, something you can sleep in, that's affordable.
It it's interesting that 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 Island City Harbor down there, they uh, they got their floating house that, you know, that's. Completely on the water that they ran out and they've got uh two. What I call cabin cruisers that they renovated and they, you can sleep up six or eight. And then they had enough, they have another one that was a gentleman and his wife from Chicago came over for thirty-eight years, I think they said. And they got to the point where the doctor said he couldn't do it anymore. He says, I wanna give you the boat. And she said, we can't do that, but but you can make a donation. So he donated it. And they fixed it up and they rented out and on the premise that anytime he wants to come over, he can go up for free at charge, you know, but. And then they're working on one. They only, they take everything out of the harbor. Uh, in the wintertime and shrink wrap it, dry dock it. The only thing that stays in, the only things are the tugboat. The paddle wheel. And this new one that they're working on and they're trying to get it done before winter hits, but in the middle of it, there are. Two about eight-inch cylinders that go right down in the water so they can ice fish out of the thing in the wintertime. And they say that's like twenty-five foot right there in the, in the harbor, Marina, so. Some real interesting things that they're, and they're, they're planning, I'm sure you know, they're planning on putting a restaurant in down there and.
Mm-hmm.
So they're, they're doing some great things. Thanks just to see.
And I don't know if there's anything going on at like Massy Marina or anything like that. I mean, I just, there's a lot of locations where you could have.
Massive in the big kind of.
Yeah, yeah, it is, isn't it? Yeah, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the only one that I know of. Yeah.
But.
What's the one you?
Need those in Jackson, yeah, but you don't, you don't have any anything public there. It's all private.
Not, same, right.
And that's one I'd like to get, see what you change. Honor wish list.
What's the route to that?
Uh, a lot of politics. A lot of politics and talking to the right people and getting the right people on board to.
As far as what?
Um, the car of engineer is the, is the final say on, and they've been very difficult to get.
But there's nothing there for the public, other, yeah, I mean, it's all private owned owned homes.
It's on government lease ground, though.
No, it isn't?
No, that doesn't work, no. Kohlberg built that and it's all private. They all have their own spot for a boat dock, but. I mean, there's a nice access back, I mean, when you go down the high bridge road. That creek's pretty good size all the way back up in there and there's a. Areas that could be.
But even if they own it, there's something in there that the core keeps keeps them from developing, just Bruce Creek, for an example, they wanted, they wanted to put. Some out there.
They limit what you can do with the height, you are where, how you build, I mean, you have to get a permit from them, but it's all private.
Mike Griffin has a pretty good knowledge of that.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, next time.
See you.
Um, we had um early childhood Iowa last night and on November twenty-eighth. Um, there's going to be um kind of an open house for all of the legislators and. The other members of the boards of supervisors to come and listen to the different programs that are provided by early chat with Iowa. And um, it's going to be four o'clock on the twenty-eighth.
Where at?
At the uh. The office in DeWitt. Your satellite office of October. No, of November.
Okay.
November.
Monday.
Monday.
November twenty-eight, twenty-eight, yes, on a Monday.
And I'm sorry, you said DeWitt.
Yeah.
Will we get an email on that?
Yeah, you will. Any other comments or?
We ended up dating on the trails, make the streets open.
Um, you you guys did see the email from Kathy Gilroy. That's a good idea, actually, that we can. Use the same.
Yeah. Wearing outfit or whoever the person is gonna do it, that makes sense to me.
Yeah.
So if there is no other business motion to adjourn, be in order.
I'll move.
Second.
It's been moving in second, all those in favor?
All right, all right.
I wish you carry.